Call the bench, people. There's an order meeting to order. We'll say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please have all cell phones silenced during the meeting. Item four announcement, the village board will convene in full session under state statutes nineteen eighty-five one C for the purpose of considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the government will buy as jurisdiction or exercise responsibility, consideration of separation from village employee. Item five, I'd look for approval of the agenda.
I would move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vote, motion carries. Item six, public comparisons and citizens comments. No debate will occur with the board on items introduced by citizens. Items will not be acted upon at this meeting, but will be referred to the proper staff or committee if action is required. And please keep your comments to three minutes. Anyone here to speak? Hearing none, we'll move on. Look for the approval of the consent agenda.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vote, motion carries. Item A, Exeterioral Zoning Board. Item A, Approval Land Division via CSM Parcel one nine zero point zero two. Great. You want this?
Sure. Our applicant is here tonight. If you have any questions. Current property is a twenty-seven point five four acres. It's within the ETZ's jurisdiction. Land division will create two parcels, one to be owned by the Newblair's Brewery Company, other to be retained by the current owner. The current owner will retain approximately eight point four eight acres. And that's shown in parcel A, the attachments. The property is currently zoned agricultural. The use of the, it will remain agricultural following the division. The ETZ Board recommended approval of the proposed land division via CSM Parcel one ninety point zero two.
I forgot to look at who's the current owner. Peter Hurdick? Peter Hurdick's? Oh, Peter Hurdick.
Yeah.
I was confused.
By where is it?
By where, I couldn't quite figure out where this is. Just...
I'm gonna say that I believe it to be that Asfalls Drive.
Is the, by the brewery, isn't it?
Yes. Right, where the curves there, go up, start going up the hills. I tried that too, and it doesn't work that way.
Sort of, I mean, so is here to buy the brewery up on the hill?
Yeah, it's right adjacent to the highway.
So it is just basically with the, dividing a little bit of lot and giving it that way for the moving end span, I assume? And they're going north.
This might help. So, this is the existing parcel right now.
Okay.
Here's the brewery driveway.
Oh, good.
So Mr. Hurdick's gonna keep this part, and we're gonna get this part.
Oh, okay, that does make a good difference.
Yeah, I think that makes it a little clearer.
And we actually, we actually already own the driveway, which is the yard.
Right, 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 yeah.
So you're retaining this for...
Mr. Hurdick's private office. And then we're giving him that as an easement to get there.
Yeah, correct.
Correct. So we're actually also buying this little street right here with us. So we're gonna pass.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. I think, you know, the property owners are happy to the problem, or even hanging it up. Sure, I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve this parcel.
The land division via CSM.
Yes. I'll second.
Any further discussion for the board? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vote, motion carries. Item B, Approval Access Easement to Highway sixty-nine for landlocked parcel A created by Divisional Divisional Parcel one nine zero one zero two.
Okay, with the land division, that was just approved. It requires access via other officially approved means. This, the access easement would grant that. So it's providing, you have to provide access to the landlocked parcel. And so this is, fulfills that requirement.
And is it safe then to exit wherever they are exiting? Is that all removed then, as far as like?
They just, they have no concerns.
Okay.
The driveway kind of right across from H?
In practice, you'll probably see them utilize the driveway, some of the driveway that they already have. So this allowing them to continue using the driveway. But this would be the legal access.
Okay, right.
But he can take his, if he drives up, he can take a drive to the pond that he's retaining ownership of. Get there through whichever means the brewery allows him.
From their driveway, he could've gotten there.
But, you know, what concern do you have?
No, I was just gonna say, the only thing that I would be concerned about is that it says easement to Highway sixty-nine, and you said that that's, we have no concerns about them exiting or entering onto the highway at that location. It's not, is that what?
In other words, if they chose not to use that present access?
The legal access that they're granting?
Yeah, that they're using now. If they chose not to use that, and they use this one easement?
I'm just saying, if the brewery decided to let them access their parcel, their landlocked parcel via another route through their property, that, that would be allowable in practice.
There's nothing binding to that at all.
But this is the legal, it's the legal means of access that's required by law to, to the town.
So I'll go ahead and...
And eventually, the brewery has an option on that land, but the current property owner wanted to retain it for longer. So brewery will, it's their intention to at some point own everything in that, in this, the current parcel that's being provided that they would own after that.
A lot of them wanted to, nobody will be letting, not if they, not if you approve the easement.
So I'll make a motion to approve access easement to Highway sixty-nine to the landlocked parcel created by the Divisional Parcel one ninety point zero two.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vote, motion carries. Okay, Public Works Public Safety. Consideration Discussion Resolution twenty dash zero eight, Sugar River Trail Extended Snowmobiles. That's thirty-two in your packet.
Many of you have seen this item before you, before. I went to both Parks and Recreation and Public Works Public Safety. The DNR was requesting an opinion from the village board regarding a request to expand snowmobile access from where the trail crosses Highway sixty-nine down to Culvers, where it's currently prohibited by state traffic law. Both committees recommended against extending that access, largely because the DNR had stated if, if snowmobiles were allowed, they would cease maintaining it, and it's likely that it would revert it to a gravel pathway. And with the popularity of the, of the path for recreational opportunities and the crossings across those streets of snowmobiles, both committees thought it was best to leave the practice, as it currently is. So this resolution would be forwarded on to the DNR, and that's what it states to that effect, if the village would prefer the DNR continue with its prohibition of snowmobiles on this section of trail.
I would move for the adoption of Resolution R twenty dash zero eight.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vote, motion carries. Item B, Consideration Discussion Resolution twenty dash zero nine. Spring cleaning appliance pickup rates. That's thirty-three in your packet.
Mr. Kirk Demphy currently provides appliance pickup services during the village's annual spring clean event. Recently informed the village that he would be increasing his rates by ten dollars for both non-free-on appliances and free-on appliances. This would increase the cost of a sticker to twenty-nine dollars, and twenty-four dollars, that is paid by the user. And the Public Works and Public Safety Committee recommended approval of Resolution twenty dash zero nine.
I would move for the approval of Resolution R twenty dash zero nine. Second.
Any further discussion?
This is only if they buy appliance stickers, right? It doesn't affect the, whether the, or whatever?
Yeah, it affects, only if you are disposing of an appliance.
Okay, thank you.
And you, and that requires a sticker.
Just need that clarification.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vote, motion carries. Item C, Consideration Discussion Authorization To Conduct Simplified Water Rate Case.
Water utility is eligible for a simplified rate case in 2020. The simplified rate case is limited to a three percent increase. Staff is seeking approval to conduct that rate case. The rates would still have to come back for approval to the village board again after it's conducted. The Public Works Public Safety Committee recommended authorizing staff to conduct the simplified rate case for the water utility.
Okay, so just for clarification, we're authorizing you to conduct the case, and then you will bring the results of that back to us?
The village board will have to approve the rate, correct? Whether to have an increase or a different increase in what the case comes back with, or to accept the results of it.
I can make a motion to approve the authorization to conduct simplified water rate case.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vote, motion carries. Item ten, Administrator's Report. Consideration Discussion Hundred Seventy-Fifth Anniversary Gift to the Village from Switzerland delegation.
The visitors that we'll be having from Switzerland for the hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary would like to present the village with a gift of street signs with Glanor names. They're seeking confirmation the village would accept and install the street signs. We did consult with our village attorney, and as long as the current legal street signs remain, there would not be any issues. They did attach a map with their proposed locations. So they've had, there were similar ones that were here in the past that were taken down at another point. These would be installed in such a way that the legal signs would remain, and then the decorative signs would also be installed.
Is this how, is this how they were thinking it from then?
Similar to that, correct. And I did ask them if it would be the brown with white lettering, and they said that is their preference.
So that they would color court names?
Is there any conflict with this and the street names up by the Newblair's home?
Uh, not, I don't believe so, no.
Those streets are...
There's only one called the Big Engie. Cause there's an Engie, I think.
Is there?
There's an Engie Court.
Oh, there's an Engie Court. Oh, I see.
But that wouldn't be Engie Street.
So there's no other streets up there with similar names?
No, it's a court.
One.
Courts usually, courts usually go off of the main name street, so...
And bird.
Maybe that's not a big, I'm just curious, there's no other... And then the Route de Mos, Schwandern, Despot, up at the, up by the Newblair's home. I don't know what the street names are there.
There is one, I forgot.
There is?
There is Schwandern.
Those are Flanden.
There's Schwandern.
These would not be legal names, so they wouldn't be reported to...
Right.
Like, a dispatch would not reference these streets. They would reference the Fifth Avenue, Fourth Avenue, Sixth Avenue. No addressing would change.
Yeah, I realize that. I just, I'm thinking visitors. Pretend to be a total stop, we don't, I shouldn't have said that. We don't pretend to be, we are.
I can, I can request that they...
Maybe there's another, a different name?
I think those are the numbers, that's what they're named, right?
About Elm, there's an Elm up at the home.
There's an Elm.
Mott, is there a Mott Street in town? I'm just going through. Go down there, is that?
Oh, it says, right. Durst, Elmer, Engie, Glanor, Hyasone, Posey, Cooley, Legler, Schwandern, and Strike. Those are the...
If you look at the bottom of that page, that's the ones that are up at the home. And the color, that's how they look up at the home.
I just wanted to mention that.
And like, green and white reflective tooth then, Jeff, you know? The same as we have on our street here?
They're, they're really faded. I mean, they're, they're pretty poor condition up there. Well, how about if we just change, Schwandern, please.
What?
How about if we just ask them about Schwandern? I don't want to be hard on this, but... I've been placed as a right attorney.
So it looks like the...
What the hell is this?
Right, so it looks like Engie is a, and Schwandern are the two repeats.
Engie and Schwandern.
Well, and if they've chosen, maybe we can let them just choose.
Two different names now.
There are other names that are available.
And the Stusins came in, a couple of other ones.
So Schwandern, let them know that we have Schwandern and Engie to avoid confusion. We took the different streets.
I think that's a good point.
Okay. I'm going to, to raise a point of interest here. How many Durst roads do we have? Durst?
One.
One on the village and one on the county.
There, there's no Durst. And there's not a new Durst.
We're not using...
What is Spurs Valley? What is Spurs Valley? See where the numeral two is?
What are you concerned about, right?
Well, so far, I've seen three different spellings of Durst.
So... That doesn't have anything to do with this?
It has nothing to do with what we're talking about.
I, I know that, but as a point of interest, how many Durst roads are there? In the village? Like, one, two, one?
One, there's one.
This right here, where it says Durst Valley, makes it three. Well, what are you looking at?
Yeah.
In this map here, at the top, it's by number two, Durst Valley.
Oh, okay, spell it wrong.
Okay. But it's supposed to be Durst.
I don't know. That's not, that's not my name.
That's be right here in this intersection.
Yeah, so what it, what is that? Is that the name of the road?
I think that's just was... I don't, that's not, I don't think that's the name of the road.
That's not what they call Durst Valley years ago.
Yeah. Back.
Okay, then it brings the point, what's the proper spelling of Durst?
There are two different spellings of Durst.
I know, but it's the same road. Depends on whether you enter at one intersection or the other intersection. Correct?
I didn't, I've never noticed that there was two spellings on the signs.
That's, just as a point of interest, though, there is some... Yeah.
So what kind of motion should we make that we would like to consider them, we'd like to consider names other than Schwandern and Engie?
You can, a motion that you would accept the gift with the condition that they find different, different names that we don't reuse Schwandern and Engie.
But should we, but my concern is, is that if we don't list out the other names of other roads that they haven't selected, I'm sorry, I lost my spot again. We already have, we wouldn't want them to choose any of these names that we already have.
Weird, but that list is not actually Durst, so it's not, not at all.
That came from, their information could have been incorrect.
I would move graciously, gratefully, accept the offer of, from whoever, from whoever.
Are you waving at me, Joe, or you wanna say something?
I do wanna say something, so...
Wait, wait, wait.
He's in the middle of a motion, I'm sorry.
That's all right, I defer to that.
Okay. So when we changed all our road signs out a year ago, we took down the old ones, cause they were bad. They were really bad. Anyways, so in this village, since I've been here, we have noticed that some of these signs would, might have been placed on top of stop signs, which is a hundred percent illegal. There should be no street signs on top of stop signs whatsoever, so we will have to do a lot to change these signs over, if they're placed on there. Some of them might not be, I don't know that off the top of my head.
No, we have complete control over where to install them.
Yeah, I, I will not install them on top of stop signs.
What, are the current street signs on top of stop signs?
Yes.
I think that should be corrected.
We're in the process of doing, and it's just, I'm, that's what we're doing.
I mean, if that's already a violation of something, then it should be corrected.
Please, please correct them as you can.
Yes.
We are.
And then once you correct them, though, that wouldn't matter if these signs went on top of the other.
As long as they go on top of legally installed streets.
Right, it's very important. And a lot of these signs, correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, were already posted at one point in time, so really, all they're doing is kind of refresh them.
Correct.
That they weren't previously, that you had previously made out, just recently.
Now, they were put in, put up for the hundred and fiftieth anniversary celebration.
Okay.
And then the individual, like Danielle and I bought a sign and had put up. I mean, the individual was from the village. This didn't come from foots, or this came from local residents that bought the signs and brought them up.
Twenty-five years ago.
Right.
Basically, we're just kind of rehabbing it to bring back that old, old conflict, so.
And I see, you know, that they were suggesting these names because they were used back in eighteen hundreds.
Oh, those were the original names?
They were the original names, and so they were reverting back to that, which is a nice idea. But I agree, I don't think we should, since we now have some streets with some of the names, let's just do some different ones.
I have a question, I don't, go ahead. Are those actually municipal streets?
Now, the streets by the home and private streets?
Yeah.
They're private.
They're private.
They're private. So that would not be a conflict? But it would be as far as people trying to find them.
Find an address.
Why can't, I've had people ask me, where's Ass, Assland Road? I said, there is no place, road like that in the municipal. Am I wrong?
You were wrong.
That's why I'm wrong, there is. They're just not owned and maintained by the village. So they're, they're legal streets.
So there is a sign up in the municipal that says, Ask...
Well, they're in our municipality, it's just we're not responsible for reconstructing that.
So do we own now those roads up there?
No.
No.
No, most of them.
But that's the people's address.
But it's on, it's within the village's limits.
There are official addresses.
They are official.
Oh, they are official, yes.
But we don't own them. So I would move that the board directs the village administrator to contact the...
Swiss delegation.
The Swiss delegation, to say that we would be very grateful to accept their offer of signage with consideration that we do not want to duplicate street names, i.e. Schwandern and Engie. And they'll figure it out. They're smart people, Swiss people, they're smart.
I'll give the second one then.
Okay, any further discussion? You called up Jake. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vote. Item B, Discussion Consideration Cancellation Of April Eighth, Twenty Twenty Village Board Meeting. Great.
No, we don't have any pressing items for this agenda, and it is also, it would be the one rescheduled to that Wednesday due to the election. We're expecting a rather stressful election for our clerk's office, and so we're, if the board is willing, we would suggest canceling the meeting of that week.
I would so cancel the village board meeting of April eighth, two twenty.
Second.
Any more discussion?
One question, I mean, I would assume that if anything pressing does come up, we would just call an emergency meeting.
We would call a special meeting, not necessarily an emergency, but...
Sorry if I got the word wrong, but I'm just saying that, you know, the cancellation of this doesn't stop us from calling a special meeting if something were to come up.
Correct, if there's something pressing came up, we could still call board.
I see.
Just a point.
Yep.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Item C, Discussion Consideration Reschedule April Twenty First, Twenty Twenty Village Board Meeting to meet April Twenty Second, Twenty Twenty. And I'm the cause of that.
Oh, sure, I think it'd be one of you.
Well, it's gonna depend, because that's when the county board meets, and I gotta be down there to be sworn in that night. I told me, either Peggy would have to run the meeting, or me, but we don't go Peggy status either. You know, she's, she's in, in New York, and I don't even know if she's home yet, driving yet. So that's the reason we want to move to Wednesday.
I don't see it.
I'll make a motion to reschedule the April Twenty First board meeting to April Twenty Second.
I would second.
And I don't know, we don't know yet if there's even gonna be an election in April, so, you know, that's all up in the air too.
I know, that's what it is.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vote, motion carries. President's Report. Nothing?
Um...
Where? Oh, I'm on, I gotta get to the revised one.
amended.
amended. How did I lose that?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay. Consideration Discussion Village Policies And Procedures To Affect Covid-Nineteen Response. Greg and I talked about this a couple days ago. We have no ordinance saying who or what can authorize shutting down Village Hall as far as the public coming in. So he has gotten some legal, where it has a resolution from the village attorney, how we could authorize the village administrator to make the decision to close Village Hall.
Yep, so there's some, there's some things in here listed out. They're being considered across the city right now by cities and villages, largely, right now, they're being heavily considered by Dan County municipalities. If you read through it, when you get to the now therefore is where the specific powers that could be delegated to the village administrator if the village board could not meet to conduct normal village business. These things, it delegates cancellation of village programs, closure of village facilities as appropriate authorization to allow staff to work from home, continuation of payroll for all regular full-time and part-time, at least twenty hours per week employees, temporary grant of emergency leave for up to two weeks for employees exposed to Covid-nineteen or that need to self-quarantine, authorization to approve the payment of bills, authorization to release emergency contingency funds if necessary for a Covid-nineteen response, authorization to approve or deny special event park use and street use permits based on federal and state guidelines of gatherings. And then it goes on with some further emergency powers enumerated, and those include authorizing purchases and accepting bids, which would otherwise require approval of the board so long as such purchases or bids meet all statutory and local code requirements, and authorizing temporary budget adjustments and transfers. Essentially, what this does is if the village board is unable or to meet, if we have a number of board members who got sick, if there was reason for concern of having a gathering of people, I would, I have the authority to continue village business. Without, currently, if we stop, if we couldn't meet or stopped meeting and bills had to come to be paid, we would be unable to pay them, we would be unable to process payroll, things of that nature that the board routinely... Currently, we would not be able to do things such as that. And then in addition, there's other emergency powers in there that if they became necessary in a very quick response that if they became necessary in a very quick response to something that occurred, and I could take action to do so. It does state that the board would have to ratify those actions at a later date, so it would come back to the board, those actions that did take place be presented to the board for ratification.
What did you say that?
Well, final sentence before the signature line, any actions taken under this application?
Okay.
And then, this is, this is 60 days effective from the date of approval, which would be tonight. And then it expires unless the board decides to continue it.
And then I see that if you were to become ill, the village clerk slash treasurer?
Powers would fall onto her, largely because her access to the budget and knowledge of the budget is where the, the knowledge would be necessary for the transferring of funds and things of that.
And I have to be morbid or crude, but if both of you were to get ill, since you're working together.
The village board has to meet again and authorize the powers on to another.
To another ritual person.
And how come there is nothing in here that states that anything could be done electronically? Like, I know that we are not, and we don't communicate via email because it's a quorum. But, I mean, in times such as these, why is there nothing that would state that we could meet electronically?
Open meeting clause.
There is, there are some who, under the emergency powers, believe that we could authorize digital participation in a public meeting. We would still have to have a, a room and a venue for people to actively participate in their, in their public meeting. So essentially, then there's disagreement.
I, I get it, I'm just asking.
There is, there is an argument to be made that we could claim the authority to allow, under the power, you could change where you hold the meeting. You could, you could cite it so that you're holding a meeting digitally, the location becomes digital. We would still, I would probably, it'd probably be me, you would have to come to the board room and allow members in, and we would have to have a calling number. It's not something that we're pursuing at this time. If the board, if the board's interested, I can talk to our village attorney about drafting such a thing, but it is, it's on.
It was just a curiosity thing for me because it seems to be kind of what they're moving towards in the rest of the community. They're talking about online meetings, online, you know, working remotely, you know, and I'm just like, okay, if we're going to try to go that secluded, how long are we going to be in a situation where we couldn't hold an open meeting anyway?
Well, we always have to hold an open.
Right, but I mean, I mean, like, I'm not saying like open up, but like where we couldn't have people come together, so we could do it online, you could open, we used to do it at Word, open a meeting online.
But the public doesn't have access.
Right.
It's governed by laws.
It's just too, it's just too big of a game right now.
Take that.
Or they're just kind of going week to week. They don't discuss.
The public hasn't, has a right to participate in the public meetings of its governmental body, and we don't have the ability to circumvent that even in the event of a, of a health emergency such as.
Right, well, I mean, if we give you all of that power, you're going to be, you could potentially be doing quite a few things.
If the board can meet, we will continue to have the board conduct the mutual business. This does give me the authority to continue village business, but it's a, it's an act taken by the village board in a public meeting.
Right now, 10 or less people are still.
Right, meeting.
Okay, so.
So I have one, well, on the resolution. The authorizing purchase of accepting bids. And I, I realize we have ratification, we do have bids now on, I'm assuming, on the water park thing. So how would you foresee, I, I would be very remiss, I would be very reluctant to have you accept a bid on that on our behalf. We discussed that at the park meeting. Is there some way that's not in violation of the open meeting law, that if it came to that, and, and not only this situation, but any other bidding situation, that the appropriate committee could be consulted?
Research.
And, and before you entered into a, even a verbal agreement?
So we have, that's, I believe we only bid that, well, we have currently open, and then I don't think we plan to have any bids in the future. I can tell you that I don't, I have no plans to accept the bids that we received unilaterally for that, for that case. But if you would like to, I think what it may do, I think what it could allow us to do is that if a borrowing was necessary related to this, the help, the public emergency that's happening.
Right, and I'm just wondering if that couldn't be strengthened by saying of stuff that can't be put off. I mean, like, obviously, when we're in this kind of a crisis, as much as we'd love to see the park get done, it could wait, so, I mean, like, you could put, could you, I mean, I guess your attorney drew this up, but couldn't they say something in the effect of, as is urgent, or, you know?
I think the purpose of this, of the resolution is to, to continue to do things that are necessary that can't be delayed. So in my, in practice, how I would enforce it is if something could be delayed without negatively impacting the village, then I would, I would not seek to take action on it. I would delay until such a time that the board could act.
So we're trusting you that I drop in tomorrow?
That's my, that is my hope.
Well, mine too.
I do understand the.
We don't want to lock into anything that we can't get out of. And I, and I understand, I have trust implicitly, but I think the the ratification clause might cover this.
Yeah.
Obviously, we couldn't undo anything.
That's what I was thinking.
If, if, if I paid something.
And I realize that works both ways. If we have bids in and we want to get this thing done, we want to be able to tell these people, yeah, here's where we are. Looks like you have a little bid, but it hasn't been formally accepted.
Correct.
And like we discussed before, these people understand the whole process. So the, the would we like to out, so to speak, would be the ratification clause here at the end of the resolution?
It would be, it would, it would be a way to certain, if I took an action that you didn't, that the board was unhappy with, it would certainly be at the time to, there would be a rebuke of sorts. If, if a payment had already been made, I don't think we could bring that money back. But that would be, that would be the formal approval by the board at that time. Would it allay any concerns if we added, in consultation with the village president, to the, to those A and B? The authorization for purchases and accepting bids, and the authorization for temporary budget adjustments and transfers, or we can eliminate the accepting bids portion of it and just say authorizing purchases? We could do either of those.
I mean, it would be an extenuating circumstance. We have to have faith. Vis a vis this, but I just want to make sure we're not locked in. And I think the ratification thing does get us out of this, right?
My goal will be, I won't take no other action unless the board is unable to meet.
Because this isn't, there's no end date to this, so this becomes a.
60 days.
Yeah, it's for 60 days.
So on the second page, the third whereas, this resolution shall serve as the village board's direction until such a time so that the state's public health emergency is lifted. So if it's lifted before 60 days, this resolution ceases to be enforced. But no more than 60 days from the date of passage by voice vote at the board meeting of March 17. So 60 days from March 17 that automatically expires and would have to be recommitted to by the village board.
I'd like to bring the attention to the, on the first page, the fifth, sixth, and seventh areas. And it seems like that's just a simple way of covering what Chuck is talking about.
Click action, yeah. Yep.
I mean, that's.
It does, it does provide for flexibility if, if an emergency situation arises.
But I, I think that's just the attorney's way of just making it plain and simple.
That pretty much says in there, but the reason for doing it would be because of the COVID-19.
Because of the disaster, the urgency that we're in.
But the whereas is, don't have legal standing to resolve. I understand what you're saying, and I'm saying it's not of the 60-day limit.
It certainly does involve a certain degree of trust, in my judgment. I certainly understand that and respect the, what the village board has to trust me with. I just think it's, it's something that could become necessary and hopefully is not necessary.
I would rather be prepared, I mean, I think I will go ahead and make a motion to, I think we need to come to a vote.
Motion.
It does, yeah. To accept.
To approve the resolution 20-10.
Yes, to, yeah. I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, Carrie. Do we want to ask if you want a closed session, or should we just go into closed session?
For the, I guess we can, for the next item, would people like a briefing in closed session prior to action being taken? We have received a letter of resignation that can be accepted by the board, but if you'd like any details on it, we should go into closed session to discuss personal matters.
So maybe we move to one closed session.
Second.
Joe, take the door with you, please.
I have to, can you hold the man up real quick? I have to call him, boy. Michael Gancher?
Yes.
Peggy? Tammy Newberry?
Yes.
Chuck Phillipsen?
Yes.
Peter Stride?
Yes.
Roger Chutman?
Yes.
The mayor is here, we have the coronavirus.
So first we'll make a, a motion, I would, I would move to accept the resignation of Officer Logan Lang. Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, motion carries. Can we discuss that, please, as an agenda item?
I, I would just pose the question, I would just pose the question to the, to the board of past practice, if, if the board has had to take action in the past to post a job opening for a previously budgeted position that has since been vacated. If, if the answer is yes, then I do believe we will have to wait until we can post it onto an agenda, a future agenda that's listed for action.
You posed the question, I don't know the answer.
I don't remember having to do that.
Okay.
In the six years.
I'll consult with the, the village clerk tomorrow and see what past practice has been, and we can.
We can expedite this.
Yep.
Yeah, it's got a.
We could, I just didn't go. Just for the sake of, and maybe I'm not a war here, but since we're going into these extenuating circumstances with the emergency orders and so on.
And we just canceled the next.
We might, I know since I've been on the board, and I, I found it very, I, I, very questionable. Anytime anyone ever brought up the, which was me, concept of, of a special meeting, it has been like someone did something nasty. So we do have, I hope you're all aware, we do have the ability to have special meetings. And I have heard the comment that, well, they cost money. Well, they can't cost that much, because I know what I get paid, and you all get paid the same. So there are times when those things might be necessary. Coming into this coronavirus situation, we may have to have some special meetings somehow. I don't know, maybe the, maybe the maybe the procedure for open meeting clause, maybe we'll have to find a way around them, maybe we'll have to find a venue that satisfies that. I'm all for open meeting, I don't want to pay open meeting to person. But we're not going to be operating in a vacuum here just because of the. I, I understand your concern, but I also understand the concern for the public safety of the community and the time factor, the window factor involved here.
I understand that, and I'm saying, let's expedite this.
Oh, okay.
That's what you were saying.
I'm sorry, I.
So we'll just have to try to find out, for sure, if we really do need to.
If we, if we had to have a motion to approve them to fill a position that's already approved, is that basically the problem?
We can have that be.
It would be, it would be just conduct to start search, to start a record.
Then, at that time, if you find out that that isn't done, then we can call a special meeting to give them permission. If we don't need to, then we don't have to, and this is a thumb, is that what we're saying?
Yes, basically, and Chuck is correct, we can, special meetings can be called as, as necessary.
Right.
Hopefully.
I don't think they need board approval to start the hiring process. I think they could, I think he's going to find that all from one possibility, and he's going to be able to go to them and say, hey.
Because then we ultimately come to the board and say, hey, this is who we're going to hire.
Right.
Either way, it does require two.
We're not creating an imposition, you're filling an imposition that we just accepted the resignation.
Nor are we creating a new policy. We're going to find out, just exploring what's been down in the past.
Sounds perfect, all right.
Okay, any further business? Here we are, return.